This meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education will come to order and thank you so much for coming. We have a full house. There may be a few seats available. If you're sitting by an empty seat, raise your hand. Somebody may like to take that seat. There's a couple right up here and there's one in the back. If anybody wants to move, you're certainly welcome to come up and do that. The first thing that we're going to do is have our meeting begin with an invocation and we're delighted to have Reverend Joel Churchwell of the Sandy Run Missionary Baptist Church here this evening. He's going to come to the podium and deliver our invocation and Joel is a retired member of the school board. He's not really retired, but he's retired from us and we're glad you're here with us this evening.
Let us pray. Eternal and gracious God, we thank you yet again for allowing us to assemble in this venue. And Father, as our duly elected representatives of the school board, continue to execute governance of our great district. We ask that you shower them with wisdom, give them great understanding and clarity as they continue to mold and shape policy for the betterment of our students. We thank you now. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Will you rise and face the flag and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda before you and you've had a chance to look over that. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agendas as it is presented.
Is there a second?
Heard a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is the approval of the consent agenda. You see those items and they are regular items that are there for our approval. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
She'll vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next comes the part of our meeting that we really enjoy and that is the good news spotlight. And we will begin the good news spotlight this evening with having the Dr. Lisa Peel. She's already coming up. She's so anxious. She said she was excited because she was going to be able to do this tonight. And this is the performing arts state honors, I believe.
Yes ma'am, thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, executive staff, Dr. Singletary and our audience this evening. We would like to begin our good news by recognizing and congratulating the following students and their teachers on their selection to be part of the 2018 North Carolina Honors Ensembles. This is quite an honor and achievement and it reflects hard work and dedication over the years in their music studies. These students worked hard with their teachers guiding them to learn a specific musical audition piece and build music skills which allowed them to compete against hundreds of other students from all over the state of North Carolina for a spot to perform in one of the North Carolina Honors Ensembles. It is important to note that these students auditioned for their respective ensembles while Onslow County Schools was still out of school due to Hurricane Florence, I will say. Let's give them a round of applause for that. Once selected, students worked to learn a variety of musical selections and attended the 2018 NCMEA Professional Development Conference in Winston-Salem on November 19th through the 13th. At the conference, students worked with renowned musicians and gave a final performance with their respective honors ensembles at the select venue in downtown Winston-Salem. When I call your name, please come up to be recognized. I would also like to invite their teachers and administrators to come up as well. First, we would like to recognize a student that was part of the North Carolina Honors Orchestra from Northside High School and that is Jackson Cooney, a 10th grader. And his teacher, Ms. Hoffman, and his principal, Ms. Jackson is here tonight. If you will come up, please, and stand for a picture. And here is your certificate. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
And next, we would like to recognize students who were selected to be a part of the North Carolina High School Honors Chorus and the North Carolina Middle School Honors Chorus. So first, we would like to recognize students from Jacksonville High School, Victoria Gibson, a 12th grader, Madison Grifaldo, an 11th grader, Elijah Mayer, a 9th grade student. And Ms. Sutton was not able to join us tonight, but we do have her administrators here. If they both or three could come up, that would be great. Congratulations. Next, we have two students from Newbridge Middle School, Reagan Hartley, an 8th grader, and Susanna Castle, a 6th grader. And their teacher is Jennifer Mahouchech. And do we have administrators here tonight? Yes, we do. Reagan, congratulations. Finally, we would like to recognize students who were selected to be a part of the North Carolina Elementary Honors Chorus. From Swansboro Elementary, Ryan Montgomery, a 5th grader, Kennedy Bennett, a 4th grade student, Emma Sanders, 4th grade student, and Ms. Lindsay Williams, their teacher and their principal, Ms. Heisman is here. Congratulations. Ryan. From Carolina Forest, we have Emily McDonald, a 5th grader, and her teacher, Ms. Mary Ludwig. Do we have any administrators here? And last, from our elementary division, we have a student from Queens Creek Elementary, Ashlyn Manley, a 4th grader, and her teacher is Dr. Zada Bazey. And do we have any administrators here tonight? Yay, thank you. So excited about this next part as well. So next, we would like to recognize our student artists that were chosen to be a part of the 2018 District Christmas Card. Each year, Onslow County Schools reaches out to students to submit holiday-themed artwork for our district Christmas card. Tonight, we would like to recognize and present a special thank you gift to those four students whose artwork appeared on this year's school Christmas card, district Christmas card. First, I would like to call up Jada Horick. Jada is a 5th grader at Silverdale Elementary and her teacher, Ms. Doss, and I believe Dr. Howard is here. Congratulations. And we have made this special for each of our artists so you get to have this and special. Okay, next up, Chloe Shreve. Chloe is a 7th grader at Newbridge Middle School and her teacher is Ms. Justice Pinky. And her principal is Ms. Dennis. Did she hear that news? Oh, thank you for being here. Chloe was not able to be here. And her artwork. Thank you. And next, Alexandria Wells. She is an 11th grader from Jacksonville High School and her teacher's Mr. Bernie Rossige and principal, Mr. Kloninger. Congratulations, Alexandria. Okay, a 10th grader. Here we go. That's all right. We wanted to graduate you quick, didn't we? And last, Ms. Charisma Zipka. Charisma is a 12th grade student at Southwest High School and her teacher is Ms. Rennie Otero. And we'll grab her artwork from the back. We'll give these students one more round of applause, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call Dr. Boris, he's coming up. You come on, Dr. Boris. He'll be giving the next awards. I just wanted to tell you something a little humorous. Saturday, some of us were at the All County Middle School and High School Orchestra and Mrs. Mahouchech has a son and a daughter, one in middle school and one in high school that were participating and her husband was sitting with their younger child. And so I asked what the children who were performing, what instruments they played and he told me. And then as I afterthought, I said, "Well, what do you play?" And her husband said, "Soccer." Dr. Boris is going to talk about the Teacher of the Year.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Singletary. It is my pleasure to have the honor of recognizing some of our outstanding educators from the 2017-18 school year. Obviously, we would normally do this a little bit earlier in the year, but for obvious reasons, we weren't able to do this in that September, October timeframe. So we are a little bit delayed, but it's absolutely my privilege to honor these teachers and these wonderful educators. We began the Outstanding Educator Awards about three years ago to really recognize teachers and staff for their outstanding dedication and performance in multiple areas including STEM, STEAM, technology, global integration, AVID, the arts, career and technical education, student support and literacy. So each year, our schools select and recognize a school-level educator of the year in each of those areas. And then those educators apply to be the district educator of the year in those areas. And we put together and each department puts together a team and they go through a selection process. And then, you know, again, early in the fall, we will recognize those winners at the district level. So it's my pleasure this year to have the honor of recognizing these teachers and I'm going to ask the administrators to come up with them as well as I call their name. So our STEM, STEAM Teacher of the Year is from Jacksonville Commons Elementary, Ms. Ashley Howard. And I believe Ms. Hoffman is here also, the principal. I'm sorry, that is Jacksonville Commons Middle and Mr. Carter Seaman is here. All right, so our tech savvy teacher of the year is Brittany Gamber from Hunters Creek Middle and Principal Chris Andre. Our global teacher of the year, we actually have two global teachers of the year. The committee could not really, I mean, we had great candidates in all areas, but really felt like both of these were definitely deserving of recognition. So first, we have Claudia Solomon from Swansboro Middle and Mr. Jacob Avery is principal. And then we also have Mr. Perry Ditch from White Oak High School and Dr. Chris Barnes. For AVID Teacher of the Year, we have Ms. Mary Downing from Jacksonville Commons Middle and Mr. Seaman, I believe is already up here. Our arts teacher of the year from Jacksonville High School, Ms. Jolie Brooks. And I'm going to ask one of the assistant principals, Ms. Stacy Gillette, to please Our career and technical education teacher of the year from Swansboro High School, Barbara Shed, and I believe Dr. Gross is here. Our student support educator of the year is also from Swansboro High School, Ms. Nicole Raines, and Dr. Gross is... And finally, our literacy teacher of the year is from Silverdale Elementary, Ms. April Bryant, and her principal, Dr. Crystal Howard. As a post for their picture here, please join me in congratulating these wonderful educators for their outstanding accomplishment during the 17-18 school year and their continued excellence every day in our classrooms.
Dr. Folger, I believe you're up with the tag team on Teacher of the Year finalist and Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excited tonight to be able to share our Teachers of the Year, the five finalists and our one winner. Dr. Eason, when she left several years or so ago, told me that this was her favorite part of the job and that she was passing it off with care. And after being involved in the process for two years, I can certainly understand and I believe it's one of my favorite parts of the job as well. Annually, our schools select a Teacher of the Year. Those selected are invited to compile a portfolio of their experiences to compete for the Onslow County Schools Teacher of the Year. The Teacher of the Year Committee reviewed portfolios of all candidates and selected the top 10. Then they conducted interviews with the 10 semi-finalists and following the interviews, the committee narrowed the field down to five. Classroom observations were conducted to select which of these outstanding educators would be the 2018-19 Teacher of the Year. I remember those classroom visits very well and this was a very tough decision for the committee. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize our five finalists and if you'll please come up when I call your name and principals ask that you join. First, Ms. Samantha Bass. Samantha is a 4th grade science and social studies teacher at Silverdale Elementary and Dr. Howard, I believe you said she may have a sick child this evening. So please share our congratulations with her. Ms. Jennifer Griffin, a biology teacher at Swansboro High School. Ms. Griffin, I remember learning about bird migration in your classroom. Mr. Rossige, Bernie Rossige, a visual arts and ceramics teacher at Jacksonville High And if you didn't already know it, this is a fine artist, Mr. Rossige is. We got to see some work that day ourselves. And the last semi-finalist is Justine Smith, an English and AP teacher at Richlands High And in Ms. Smith's classroom, we got to see lots of makerspace and some creative activities, critical thinking and creative thinking going on with her students. So now, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please join me as we congratulate Aliana Sigler, the Onslow County Schools 2018-19 Teacher of the Year and her principal, Ms. Deborah Hoffman.
And I believe I'm supposed to be giving plaques out. So Lori Schruth, I mean, Crowe was looking at me going, "Plaque, plaque." I'm like, "I don't know what you're saying."
As Ms. Crowe is taking pictures, I want to share a little bit of information about Ms. Sigler. Ms. Sigler is a 3rd grade teacher at Jacksonville Commons Elementary where she teaches English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, Science, Writing and Word Study. This is her fourth year of teaching, fourth year of teaching and the Teacher of the Year. In addition to her classroom responsibilities, she serves on the Jacksonville Commons Elementary School Strategic Planning Team, the Leader in the Lighthouse Team and the AVID Site Team. She's been recognized for achieving growth for her students as an Onslow County Schools' Read to Achieve Teacher whose class was in the top 25th percentile for overall growth in the district. She's also been twice recognized as the Literacy Teacher of the Year. In her professional biography, Ms. Sigler said she became a teacher to spend her day educating the faces of the future. She feels blessed to teach students who have made me feel like a superhero, students who have challenged me, students who have brought tears to my eyes and students who have ultimately changed my life. Originally thinking she would be a dance teacher, she has learned many lessons from her students including patience, compassion, empathy and love in the way only a 3rd grader can share that with you. Ms. Sigler is dedicated to her students and feels that through her teaching, she has the best chance of influencing not only her students' futures, but the future of the world as well. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Sigler's been training alongside her students for the annual Girls on the Run 5K. She's volunteered with the program for four seasons and loves the opportunity to work with her 3rd grade students and students across all grade levels. And what I also remember is that she also volunteers at her church. She volunteers and teaches fitness classes for Marines. She's very involved in the community and gives so much to her classroom. And I can tell you, board, from being in her classroom that day, it is amazing. It is a well-oiled machine. Everything is moving smoothly. The kids are doing 15 different things at a time and the processes are just meticulous and the students love her. Matter of fact, she was so ready for us to be out of her room because she was ready to get back to teaching the day we visited. So Ms. Sigler, Ms. Sigler, congratulations and she did represent us in the regional competition for North Carolina Teacher of the Year. So please help me congratulate the most important people in our district, our teachers.
Mr. Brent Anderson will be coming up to make recognition and before he does, though, I would like to recognize Commissioner Mark Price. He tried to hide in the very back, but I could see his head and so welcome, thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, for our final good news item this evening, excuse me, we would like to honor Reverend Joel Churchwell's service to the children of Onslow County as a member of the Onslow County Board of Education. A retired Master Sergeant with the United States Marine Corps, Reverend Churchwell holds degrees from Liberty University, including both a Master of Theological Studies and Master of Divinity. He is a certified instructor for the Congress of Christian Education, National Baptist Incorporated, and serves as the senior pastor of the Sandy Run Missionary Baptist Church. Outside of his service on the Onslow County Schools Board of Education, Reverend Churchwell is also active in the local community. He serves on or is involved in the Onslow County Consolidated Human Services Advisory Board, the Juvenile Crime Convention Council, the Onslow Carteret Crisis Continuum Project, the Founder Committee Member for the New River YMCA, the Board Member for the Jacksonville-onslow Chamber of Commerce and a Committee Member with the Jacksonville Public Safety Explorer Post. Reverend Churchwell served on the Onslow County Board of Education from 2014 until 2018 with the belief, "Education is the foundation of our community." During his time on the board, he focused on making a difference in the overall quality of our schools by focusing on the needs of our students, teachers and staff. A highlight of his tenure was being able to observe the graduation of those students who entered high school the year he came onto the Board of Education. Reverend Churchwell stated, "I proudly watch them transition to young adults who will grow into future leaders and productive citizens. Whether through their athletic abilities, academic prowess or the arts, I have had the pleasure of witnessing the immeasurable talents our young people illuminated through hard work, encouragement and the support of their family, teachers and community leaders." This evening, to honor his service, we would like to present Reverend Churchwell with a picture, including two of the major projects that were completed during his time on the board, Dixon Middle School and Richlands Elementary School. So tonight, please join me in congratulating and recognizing Reverend Joel Churchwell.
Well, I'm sure other members of the board would like to say something, but Reverend Churchwell, we certainly recognize that in today's paper, you were recognized as being one of the fabric of the community recipients and it was a very honor for you, but it was also an honor for this community to know that you are still working for the best of all of us. From a personal standpoint and knowing you quite well, I do want you to know that all of us, probably maybe not all of us in this room, but in our community, many, many people, and I know on this board, you've been so instrumental in moving the faith-based communities into not only helping the schools, but in working in the community in a stronger way than ever before. And that's because of the relationships that you have built between, among your other faith-based leaders and with the people in your congregation and we thank you. We also thank you for the dedication that you've given to this, to the school system, to the children, to the teachers, to the families, and we wish you Godspeed in all that you do and I'm glad that you're still active in our community. Other members of the board, would you like to make any comments? Certainly feel free.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you made it on time tonight. It has been a pleasure serving with you on this Board in the past, and I have also seen your work in the community. You do, and it's, you know, some people just gonna slough it off, but you really are a hard worker in this community. I don't, I understand why you get late sometimes. I don't know how you figure or find all the time to get to all the things that you do, but thank you again for everything you do for our community.
Reverend Churchwell. Thank you. There are, there are lessons I've learned in the last 12 months. I've learned a little bit about what it means to run for public office, and, and I've learned how difficult it can be. You willingly took on that challenge and, and sat on this board for four years, and, but before that, before I came over here, I remember you from the Consolidated Human Services Advisory Board when I was County Manager, and the efforts that you put into that as well, and all the ways you touched the community. The award of you being part of the fabric of our community is, is well-deserved, and, and this is just a small token of appreciation for all those people whose lives you've touched and continue to touch. And I just wanted to thank you on behalf of, of my family for making my home community a better place to live.
I first met Reverend Churchwell a number of years before he joined the Board in a special program with the Sandy Run community, and how you just stepped forward and to work very closely within that community to make it a better community, not just within your church. But I felt the passion and the heart, the soul that you have to make that area, but all of Jacksonville a, a special place to live. And your participation on the Board, you always put children first. That's special. What is the best, what, what are we doing that's in the best interest of children? And I've always respected you and admired you, and you have the nicest bowtie collection I think I've ever seen. He's tried to get us to wear bowties, but no, we're gonna give you that honor, but your wife does a great job of dressing you. But thank you for your service, and I know you're not done, there's a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Reverend Churchwell, I too thank you for everything you've done for this community, everything that you've done, you've done for this Board of Education, and I do appreciate your kind words and your support during the campaign process, which was certainly an eye-opening experience for me. But I really do thank you for everything that you've done, not only for this school Board, but this whole Onslow County community. Thank you.
Reverend Churchwell. I thank you for your service. You know, being brothers in arms, the Corps is a special place to be. Being out on the campaign trail with you, off the end of the stick, you showed a grace, sharing. We all helped each other through the rain and through the heat, and it's a pleasure knowing you. Keep charging. You know how to do it well.
I'll be careful what I say, Reverend, but truly, I, I feel just as they do. Thank you so much for what you've done for the students in Onslow County, the many hours you serve, and I know you'll continue to do that. Thank you for what you are in the community, a real leader. But I was also put in charge of your evaluation, and with all things, there are always needed improvements, and I want you to work real hard on being on time. Thank you for being a friend.
Reverend Churchwell, I tried to get enough money from this Board to buy you a Rolex. That's, that's a Rolex watch. This is, this is, it's a little janky. Thank you, thank you, Joel, and bless you.
Do I get to say something?
You certainly may.
Certainly, I want to thank God for the wonderful opportunity to serve this great community. I want to thank my wife for yielding and sacrificing some quality time that I may serve this community and this great pastor. Certainly want to thank the Sisters of Onslow County for giving me the privilege to sit and to govern this great district and to build such a wonderful relationship with family and such colleagues. And certainly to the Board, to each of you, Mr. Bob Williams, I'm working on getting on Mr. Hudson, I've shared some kind of words with you, how impressed I was with you on one particular occasion, when you did a fantastic job with Mr. Williams, spoke to your character, and even in the campaign, friendship and all. Thank you so much for just sharing and being a friend. To Mr. Taylor, it's good to be able to walk next to someone as tall in stature. This makes you have such an awesome presence, but more importantly, just thank you for sharing, sharing such great wisdom and insight, and just inviting him in and helping me understand how governing such a great district and how important it is for the backdrop to it. Madam Chair, thank you so much for all your advice, all your words of encouragement. Thank, just thank you so much for being so supportive. To Mr. Ken Riddick, you know, we've met over a golden crowd a couple times on the clergy appreciation day. Still looking forward to hearing another great story from you, but again, thank you so much. To Mr. Lanier, as you spoke earlier, there is a bond in that fraternal organization of which we serve and retire, and certainly it was a pleasure to share and engage in the doubt on the campaign trail, knowing that our, our focus is for the betterment of our youth. And certainly, last but not least, to Mr. Wiggins. Words really can't express. But if I had to use some words, thank you so much for being who you are and the passion that you have for this district, and sharing your story from where you came from to where you are right now, that helps govern the decisions that you make. Those experiences are so rich and rewarding because there is a constant connection. And again, to the staff, thank you for being so patient with me, my asking questions. Thank you, Jody, for reminding me. Thank you, Jody, for reminding me. Thank you, Jody, for reminding me. But thank you so much for working with me and helping me gain the facts that were necessary to make a sound decision. The Lord, I'll always pose for a picture. Thank you so much. I'm done.
And you, you may take your picture.
Thank you so much. Can I take a stand? No.
I know members of the Board have some good news items they'd like to share with you this evening, so we will begin down at Mr. Williams' end.
I'll have everything this evening, Madam.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of the audience, I'll keep it brief. I know many of you have places to go and school day tomorrow, but I do want to say, here tonight, you've seen that we've honored, you know, we've honored excellence, we've honored service, and that's incredibly important. I believe in the value of, of caring about others' doing to others as you would like done to yourself, and it's appropriate that we encourage our youth when they, when they meet these milestones, and also that we show encouragement to the teachers as well. You know, one of the things that, that I've said and I've heard from other Board members, a single point of success or failure, perhaps, you know, the most important point of success for our youth is the teacher in that classroom. We can have technology, we can have laptops, we can have different types of buildings, but, but having that excellent teaching professional engaging appropriately, meeting the kids where they're at, is incredibly important. And ladies and gentlemen, we saw some of our best and brightest here, but we also have a total of 4,000 employees engaged in education every day, from bus drivers and monitors to cafeteria workers, to, to all of the administrative professionals, office professionals that help us get there. And it's a wonderful, wonderful team, and I didn't want that to be lost. It's incredibly important that we know what a, what a great school system we have. Thank you to all of our employees, and thank you for those that were honored tonight.
In summary to what he said, I'm just so proud to be, not only in this Board, but a citizen of Onslow County. We have so much, so many positive things going on, athletics, academics, and the arts. This is the place to be, and I'm very proud of our school system. They've been, thank goodness, we're all back in school now, that means we have a lot of events going on in the county. January was a very busy month, and I'm sure each of us will have, will be able to share some of the places that we've been this month or in February. This is All County Music Clinic, so we're gonna divide it up and, among us here, and talk about some of those. I would like to begin, back in early January, Thompson Early Childhood Center sponsored a, a special breakfast for our maintenance staff. Mr. Riddick and Mr. Wiggins also went to attendance, the cemetery was there as well. But Thompson Early Childhood Center recognizes those individuals that, that, that keep our schools beautiful and keep them running each and every day. They, they don't get a lot of attention, a lot of recognition, but it was their way of saying thank you, and not only what they do throughout the year, but particularly with the aftermath of Hurricane Florence. Those folks need a shining star or something, but they really work 24/7 and continue to work around the clock. Regarding one of the All County Clinics, I had an opportunity to stop by the All County Middle School and High School Band Clinic, and again, our best students from across the county got together and within about eight hours presented the concert, what normally takes six weeks, they brought it together in about eight hours and just gave a wonderful program. On last Saturday, February 2nd, the Annual Elementary Science Olympiad was held at Northside High School, and I would say most of our elementary schools were involved in that, and it's pretty much modeled after the Olympics, but they get to compete in math competitions and science and engineering, and those little kids, when they marched into that gymnasium, they, you thought they were walking, marching into an Olympic stadium. Parents and daughters were just cheering, and they were just so proud, and when they got those awards, I mean, there were a lot of high fives going on there. So, it proved to me that learning is fun, and they had a blast doing it. Like I say, we divided up some things here, but I would like to thank all the staff members who gave their time on the Saturday, gave their time on the Saturday for all the clinics and the Science Olympiad, who came out and provided such great opportunities for our kids. That's so important, they didn't get paid a dime. It was for the kids, and that's what it's all about. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
January 16th was, was really a big day for Onslow County. Through the hard work of individuals here in Onslow County, and in cooperation with DOT, of course, the Department of Defense, there was a STEM grant ceremony held at Catalyst Church. Onslow County received $903,000 in the form of a grant, and the purpose of it is to assist and support those kids who are enrolled in advanced placement classes, both the students and the teachers get benefits. The two schools that are involved in this first round of this $903,000 grant are Richlands High School and Northside High School. So, it does benefit the, the teachers and the students. It's primarily focusing on professional development and some sessions where kids actually get to be taught by teachers all over the country, so that's, that's a great thing. Also, this weekend, in fact, Mr. Taylor accompanied me to that, that event, that was really, really nice. This past weekend, I witnessed something that I, I was really amazed. Of the 116 school districts in this state, Onslow County is one of 20. That has a strings program, I, I'm sorry, an orchestra program. That's amazing. Only three school districts east of 95 have it, Pitt County, New Hanover County, and you guessed it, Onslow County, have an orchestra program. At Jacksonville High School, we saw middle school and high school students in an orchestra setting. It was absolutely phenomenal. The two conductors, one from Pitt County, one from Meredith College, were just, I think they were amazed by the level of talent, the level of preparedness, the level of support that these kids are getting from their teachers, from their parents, and from their community. The, the attendance was unbelievable. I mean, it was practically standing room only in the auditorium there at Jacksonville High School. So, I guess the, probably the thing I enjoyed most about that thing, that event, was my granddaughter was one of the violinists, so that was very special. Mr. Lanier.
February 1st, we were given the honor to attend a elementary school adoption ceremony. Ms. Tia Bulwark, she helped to sponsor that. The students of the school pretty much adopted a Marine unit and a Marine Tilt-Rudder Squadron, 3rd Battalion, 6th Marines, 2nd Marine Division, and Marine Medium Tilt-Rudder Training Squadron And during the process, quite a few things happened. Those kids developed a pledge to those Marine Corps units as they're preparing to deploy, and I'll read what they had pledged. They say, "We, the students and staff of Hunter's Creek Elementary School, do this day solemnly accept the privilege of building a partnership with the 3rd Battalion, 6th Marines, 2nd Marine Division, along with Marine Medium Tilt-Rudder Training Squadron 204, and do hereby pledge our respect and support to these organizations." And much to everyone's surprise, those Marines stood up and pledged the same to them. Another thing we got to see was that the school mascot dressed in fatigues. He prepped for his training, donned his hat, and he's going on six to seven-month deployment to Okinawa, Japan. He participated in all the training exercises necessary, and he will be sending pictures back to show his progress. But I just thank Ms. Bulwark, particularly also her young ambassadors, those little people dressed in purple, they're amazing leaders. We were talking, and I turned to Ms. Bulwark, and I said, "If the school caught fire, they'd get everybody out." And she said, "Yes, they would." That's the maturity and leadership they showed. But that's Onslow County. That's the community we are. We need to cherish it, we need to foster it.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins.
Boy, when you have so much good news, that just tells you what good things are going on in Onslow County Schools, doesn't it? I had the opportunity some weeks ago to attend Dixon Middle Career Day. Thank you to Mrs. Bazell and her staff. Had all types of volunteer folks that worked in the community to come and make presentations to the middle school students, had engineers, the sportscaster from one of the TV stations was there, meteorologist was there, armed forces representative was there, veterinarian was there, a machinist, all types of careers. But I commend those students, they really did a good job. They went from room to room to listen to all the presentations. But I really want to thank those volunteers who came and made the presentations, they gave their morning to do them. And today, Mr. Taylor and I ventured back down to Dixon, to Dixon Elementary, they had their Chinese parade, the children that are in the Chinese classes. Those little kids with those little hats were just as cute as they could be and just as excited as they could be, and I commend them for their... And I commend them for the parade. And also I'd like to mention that the Dixon High School Band, part of the band came down and marched and played in their parade today. What a great afternoon, Dixon Elementary.
Thank you. I'll close up and, and just, it won't take very long. I attended the choral and the band and the orchestra as well, so did a, a Ms. Lanier, and it, very, very good. All, all of us enjoy that. But the Honors High School Chorus was conducted, and I want to tell you the thing that I didn't like, it didn't last long enough, Lisa. It was, it was just absolutely wonderful, and if you have an opportunity, folks, it's free. It is a free event, and you, you should go to hear any of those. You would leave with a blessing in your heart, I'm telling you, and you'd be very proud of what we accomplish and what these teachers accomplish with these students. This coming Saturday at Northside High School at 3:00 PM, there will be the All County Elementary and Middle Course, and it will be packed. So if you come, you might want to know that you may have to stand up for a little while. It is really packed, and that's a good thing. And they do have a balcony there, so there are a little bit extra seats, and I hope that you will come. The entire board attended the State of the Community Breakfast, which was held recently, and that event was an opportunity for our superintendent, as well as the commissioners and Marine Corps Air Station, New River, and Camp Lejeune, to speak, as well as the college, the hospital, all of the entities that support this county. And if you've had an opportunity, if you have not had an opportunity to listen to it, it really was very entertaining. I didn't know some of these guys and ladies had as much humor as they did, but it was, it was very entertaining, and it was very enlightening about the common ground that we have in recovery from disasters such as Hurricane Florence, and how we are resilient in this community and we're moving forward. So it'll be, it's on G10, if you have an opportunity and you want to take a look at it, I think that you'll be impressed. The Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners met on the 28th of January, and we discussed our interest in working together on our budget. We're moving forward with some committees that are going to work together. Very positive meeting. I left feeling very uplifted, and I'm glad that we had that meeting and look forward to the next ones that we do meet. And last, we had two of our board members, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Wiggins, who represented this board in Washington DC at the North, at the School Board Association's Advocacy Conference. And just for about a minute, I'd like Mr. Wiggins to give us an overview of that. Can you do it in a minute?
I can't do it in a minute, but I'll do it.
Well, Joel's not here, so nobody's timing you.
It was indeed a privilege and a golden opportunity to represent the North Carolina School Board Association and our Onslow County Board of Education at the National School Board Advisory on Advocacy Institute in Washington DC. Mr. Taylor and I spent three days of meetings from early in the morning, Mr. Taylor even got up early in the morning, to 5:00 PM in the afternoon. It was definitely a learning experience for us. The conference truly exemplifies how I feel about educating our youngsters. It was all about the belief that all students can learn, and it's our responsibility, school staff, parents, to see that all children have an equitable opportunity to learn and to be successful. The conference was all about one of our groups of children that we should be concerned with and make sure that they get an equitable opportunity to learn, to grow, and to be successful. That group is children with disabilities. We have over 6 million students in public schools in the United States, and we have over 4,000 students in Onslow County Public Schools that are children with disabilities. Mr. Taylor and I attended informative meetings with many guest speakers and with our two US Senators, Senator Burr and Senator Tillis. And I commend those two senators, not for just meeting with us, but listening to us. We ask for more federal funds to help meet the needs of our children with disabilities. We ask for a vision of high expectation and accountability, not continued bureaucratic procedures. We ask for help in making a shared framework with positive teamwork with our parents. And a very important point, we ask for help in an ever-growing need to provide talented, skilled, special needs teachers, because we have a shortage across this country and certainly in North Carolina. We ask that they help us with children with disabilities and not wait till later. We need to help them while they're young and early in life. I am truly a lifelong learner and enjoy the Advocacy Institute. I think that both Mr. Taylor and myself will be better advocates for our students in Onslow County and better board members, not just for children with disabilities, but for all of our children, having done the experiences and heard the messages that we heard in Washington DC. And I really think that we had the opportunity to go. And I'll close by saying this, I can't take full proof that we did this, but when we arrived, the government reopened. The shutdown was over.
Mr. Pittman, I know, I see you. I want to say that Mr. Pittman represented Onslow County at the broadband meeting the other night, and we were the only school system represented, I believe. He did a wonderful job, an impromptu speech, really, and he just shared how important broadband services are to Onslow County schools. And of course, the community members there did that for themselves. So this is a, a venture that I believe our county government and our city government and other municipalities, as well as the school system, will be working together to hopefully enhance those services as we continue in this cyber world. Thank you, though. You did a good job. That's the end of our Good News Spotlight, and if you're here just for the good news and you would like to make your leave, this would be a good opportunity for you to sneak out. That's right. The next item on our agenda is really the beginning of our general business, and this item is Policy 3410 concerning testing and the assessment programs. And Mrs. Lisa Thompson's going to come and do the presentation on this.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Secretary. Instructional Services staff members have been reviewing current policies to ensure that we're up to date and to check and see if any revisions are necessary. And upon our review, we found that we needed to provide some, to make some revisions to Policy 3410. You can see before you on your notations that the State Board, to the extent required, we have certain administrations that must occur online, and then otherwise, as feasible with any available resources, to bring additional assessments online as we see fit. And the other notation for a change relates to the CTE post-assessment. Students who earn a credential that is currently approved under DPI's guidelines as evidence of technical skill attainment will not be required to take the CTE post-assessment. And then the additional notation on EL students who are no longer exempt in their first year in the United States to bring us in compliance with the current ESA policy. And staff would recommend that the board accept the revisions of this policy based on the current submission.
You've had an opportunity to read the policy and to look at the corrections. Is there a motion that we accept the policy revisions as presented?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
One question in regards to the English language learners?
Yes, sir.
They are no longer exempt their first year, so could you clarify? Because I remember that process before.
So part of the change requires that there are no exceptions, exceptions for students. So our English language learners will take any state assessment in their first year, but it doesn't count against the student or the school. It's not used in the accountability model that first year. It's to get, it's to meet the federal requirement of having all students take it. The second year that the student is in the United States, it would count as growth, and then the third year would be in performance and growth. So the first year, there's, there's no harm to anyone.
But they use that score as a baseline?
Yes, ma'am. When a student enrolls and we find that they, their, their home language is not English, we go through a WEITA screener to see if the student qualifies as EL and services. And right now, the month of February, we are, our students are participating in Access 2.0, which is the English Language Proficient Examination, and that will help us see if the students are making progress.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
You always have the answers anytime I ask a question. Mr. Myers, the new elementary school update, or schools, I should put, pluralize that.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Secretary. As we move forward with the design of the two new elementary schools to be located near Catherine Lake and Stumps Sound Townships, staff and Pinnacle Architecture would like to provide the board enough data on the progress of the projects. A presentation will be provided, including the conceptual or schematic design for the schools and timelines for the completion of both projects. No action will be required at this time, and Randy Baker from Pinnacle Architects will be providing materials for the board's review. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Myers, thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Secretary, executive staff. It brings, I have great privilege and honor to be here tonight to present the two new elementary schools for Onslow County. Madam Chair, before I present the two new schools, may I say a word?
Sure.
I have sat here tonight and watched this board, and it, it brings me great honor and a breath of fresh air to see a school board to allow a prayer, the, the honored flag, and to see you as board members and see the students of this county, see how you present. That's what we need in this United States. And I just want to thank you very much. Everybody else got honors, but thank you for your leadership and what you guys do for Onslow County. I see a couple of new board members, a couple of mature board members, if you will, but I do appreciate the honor of being here tonight to present the two elementary schools. First, the two new elementary schools are designed off a prototype of your newest elementary school, Richlands Elementary. Although it is a prototype, there have been modifications. We actually try to go to the school after a school is built and learn from staff members, because we, as architects, aren't perfect. What we have done is we've increased, we've actually talked to members of the kitchen staff. We've actually did a little modification of the kitchen area, because at the actual hood, the staff manager said, "Could you add eight inches in front of the hood on both sides?" We did that here. We actually modified the exceptional children's area. We took the stove out. In, in Richlands, they said they really don't use the stove. But with this, I know this might be the first time a lot of you have seen the overall plan of the school. Basically, Richlands, what you have here is a entry vestibule. It is secured, locked down. You have the administration wing, exceptional children's wing right off the entrance, pre-K first grade wing, media center, and the second, second, third grade, fourth and fifth grade. And you have the multipurpose room, little platform, cafeteria, kitchen. The layout of this school, with the new requirements that the General Statutes set, set out, we thought we were going to have to increase the square footage of the school because of the number of classrooms. Actually, this school, Catherine Lake and Stumps Sound are actually about 200 square feet less than Richlands. The two new schools, we do have two pre-K classrooms. We've got six kindergarten classrooms, six first grade classrooms, six third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms. Now with those, these classrooms, we went with the student count of 18, 16, and 17, and then the last, the fourth and fifth grade are back at 24 students per classroom. Classroom sizes, all classrooms have natural light. This school, all lighting, it'll be LED. We have increased the multipurpose area just a tad. When we met with the staff and after the incident back in, what, September or so, we thought of making these two schools as an alternate emergency shelter areas. So therefore, we did increase slightly the multipurpose and the So therefore, we did increase slightly the multipurpose and the cafeteria area. With that, with an alternate, we will accept a larger generator to run the entire kitchen and this whole area. Also, with that, we will add in additional structure for roof and wind loads of excess of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty mile an hour withwards. Any questions with the overall plan?
If I may, Mr. Baker?
Absolutely.
I noticed that your paths of expansion for the school along the three wings are to the rear.
That is correct.
So I understand that. One, one issue I see with the overall plan, which is, which is certainly not the first time you've done this, is simply, say for instance, the sheer length of travel from the end of the third grade hall or from the end of a third grade hall that is six classrooms larger and expanded to the back to a core area like the cafeteria or the administration wing. Now granted, it, it would allow for a certain addition to the wellness program to go from one end of that school to the other. But if you needed to get there quickly, you know, it, it may, it may present a problem. And I was wondering if you've been asked that question previously and if you have an answer for that?
Actually, I have not. This, these two schools will be, we have, like you said, this is a prototype. And this school has been around the state, been constructed. This will be the sixth time. With that, we've had staff, we've actually asked staff that question. And they did say that from the first grade all the way around to the cafeteria is a long walk. But what we have been told is the children need to expand or get a little bit of their excitement out. So therefore, walking, a little bit of exercise actually helps. So I have not, and have not been posed to that question. We do have other layouts that actually have Ts. But with the T-type intersections, the security that you've got with those type intersections do not allow actually three people to secure the building. So, good question, but in the past, we have not had that come up.
Okay. Follow-up, if I may. Right now, we have a construction schedule on this school that's twenty months long.
Right.
Do you believe that's too short? We, we've experienced delays with our skill center. And we also know the soil conditions in Onslow County are often not conducive to normal footers.
Exactly.
You either have piles or spread footers. So are we, are we more realistic looking at a full twenty-four month construction calendar?
No, sir. I think twenty-four, twenty months is actually more than what you. Presently, a prototype like this is being built at Elon Elementary. That school actually started in June. The foundation started last June of eighteen. That school will be finished May of this year. Less than a year, eleven months. Simkins, the first school that was built of this nature, was built in thirteen months. So yes, it can be done. At Elon, this area down here had a lot of rain. Elon had sixty-four inches of rain also in this time period. So yes, I'll say for certain, it can be done now, depending on weather, depending on acts of God.
Sure.
Yes, sir. I have no issues whatsoever. Now, you have to have the right people to construct and to build, and it's got to be a team. So I do not see any issues at all with the time.
I, I appreciate that. Talking about that team, what type of construction administration will you exercise over whatever contractor is the low bidder? Because right now, of course, we don't know. It's subject to who bids, how many bid, what bidders are, are we in competition with millions or billions of dollars of construction, of board, our military installations at the same time? So, so talk to me just a moment, if you don't mind, about your construction administration protocols.
Absolutely. The, in our contract, we've actually got a clerk of the works, which is a person that we will hire to come down here and be, visit the sites, both sites, twice, I think it's twice a week. So we will have observation. And I've actually talked to Mr. Myers. This is one of the first times I get to present to the board. I've actually asked if I could possibly each month bring an update to you, show pictures of the progress of the building. And that's still, you know, that's your call and Mr. Myers' call. But yes, sir. An architect, we are administrators, we're not construction managers. We do not govern over means and methods. We can direct as far as we can go to a contractor, to, can't really talk to subcontractors because it's a single prime, something just. We cannot go to that extent. There are avenues you can go, so, but I don't foresee that of being an issue.
Thank you. The only other question I have is on a subsequent slide.
Yes, sir.
We have, we have a lot of parents that, that drive their children to school and pick them up. Q-space is a real issue at all of our schools, including, as I understand it, perhaps Richland's Elementary to an extent, simply because it's been raining an awful lot and we do have a lot of people that, that own automobiles.
That is correct.
My family is guilty as well, I'll tell you that. So what, what are we doing to improve Q-space, especially since, you know, depending on the layout of your site? And we have add alternates to expand, it looks like, our, our total student capacity's from seven thirty-two in a base bid to over eight, eight hundred, eight thirty-five, which, given our history, shortly after, we'll, we'll be hitting our numbers at the high end of that and looking at mobile units. So, so from a vehicular standpoint, which is a lot harder to change after a school's built, what are we doing?
Absolutely. This layout that you see, we have approximately a hundred off-site or onsite queue for cars, okay? In the first of the school year, I don't care how many cars you've got stacked up, it's going to be busy. After a while, now, we have regulations that we have to go by, NC DOT. The layout that you see here sometimes kind of pushed back with NC DOT because you have all of your parents coming into one spot. You've also got your buses coming into the same location. NC DOT made us at Richland's do this type of traffic control, okay? In the past, we tried to get the cars and the buses separated. But the new idea is to get the ingress coming one side, come around the school, and then exit through one area. And this is, this is actually directed a lot from NC DOT.
I appreciate that. It's not my understanding previously.
Right.
This, this may be something new, that they could direct the parking lot layout on your own property. Certainly, the, the light configurations and ingress and egress off of a state-maintained right-of-way, they, they absolutely have authority over that.
Exactly.
And the traffic studies. Ittri, who, who would, would help study traffic congestion or high congested areas, they, they have been involved before. Some, some issues there, mixing buses and, and POV's, I see a, I see a real issue there. That's all I have for now. I don't want to take up all your time, but, but really, this is the first chance I've had to look at this. And, and given the amount of money, over twenty million dollars for each of these two construction sites, there aren't too many things more important that we'll be addressing in the next few years than spending estimated fifty-five million plus dollars.
Absolutely.
And I'd rather have questions on the front end than at the back end say, well, why didn't we think of that?
And I appreciate that, I really do. And with that said, the road access, now this is just Catherine Lake. We are still waiting on a survey for Stump Sound due to the underbrush and all that stuff. We still haven't got the survey for that road. But the new road coming in off of two fifty-eight, this is a new access road that will be donated back to NC DOT. So this road will actually become a street per se. But I totally agree with you on the flow. And I've tried to get NC DOT to look at that, but when they put it in their programs and they show cars going everywhere, this is their summation of the last three schools. Not just elementary schools, middle schools also. But I do appreciate it, thank you.
Randy, how far back off is the school off of two fifty-eight? That road that we're going to be building in there that's got the cul-de-sac on?
Right, we are, we are, I would, possibly twelve hundred feet. Is it twelve hundred? It's, it's a fur piece.
It's a fur piece and we will be the only traffic on that road in the interim, is that right?
That is correct.
So that will alleviate at least that Catherine Lake, some of that problem that we have and some of our other schools that are on the direct pathways of other residential areas, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay.
And possibly in the future, NC DOT may let this road go on through, connecting to another road.
Randy, I have a question as far as the capacity. I know that there's a proposed alternate bid for both schools to increase the capacity. Where will those classrooms be built, at the end?
Yes, ma'am. What we've got proposed, and this site actually shows the additional classrooms. You can see the actual loop road, which is the fire loop road around the school. That actually shows the build out of the additions. We've got two classrooms at each wing for your total building. That's basically.
Okay, what about the, I mean, that's going to be a hundred and some more students, I think, if I...
That is correct, it's about a hundred and more.
So what, what happens to the capacity of the cafeteria and the media center and the gymnasium area?
Right, the core area is built for, actually it's built for like nine hundred.
Okay.
All right. So it is large enough to handle the eight fifty. Yes, ma'am.
Why are we, why are we not just building it out like we did out at some of our other schools and just building it out to maximum capacity to start with?
Well, what we do, because of fluctuation in construction cost, what we like to do is get a base bid and then have alternates in, add alternates, not deduct alternates, but add alternates to add the classrooms in. Therefore, if we find out there's something, just like Mr. Hudson said, something around the site that may come up that we don't know it right now, then we've got enough money in the project that we're not over at the very beginning.
In this, I may say, when we've looked at the funding initially and stuff, it was through the joint educational funding policy that was in place. I know it's not there anymore. But at that point in time, the twenty-three and the twenty-four million dollars for the schools was, was based on six hundred student capacity schools. Based on the designs that he's doing right now, we were able to put a little bit more into that. And when I say six hundred student capacity schools, what I'm talking about is operational capacity, not just, if I packed in every single class, I mean student in the class to the maximum, what that number would be. Because, you know, we have a lot of transition, a lot of movement going on. What we do is our operational capacity is at ninety-five percent of the brick and mortar capacity. So when we talk about seven hundred students, give or take, by the time you add the ninety-five percent in there, we're right about six hundred and fifty, which is close to what the county asked for, asked us to look at for initial funding. That being said, with Richland's Elementary School that we put in, in place back in, back in August, one of the things we did was that did the alt adds, because we wanted to add more classroom capacity if possible. And when, when the bids came back in, there was enough funding to do the alt adds so we could actually increase the capacity of the school, which was, which was a benefit to us because that's when K-three class size reduction came in. And so it actually, while we lost some classrooms, student, I mean, classrooms space in the, in the schools, we were actually still able to increase above the eight hundred students that we were looking at initially.
And I understand what you're saying. I'm just concerned that, you know, when we build these schools, they're over capacity as soon as we get them done.
I agree, Bob.
Yes, sir.
And look, if I may, following on what Mr. Williams said. That's the first I've heard that the expansion was three two-classroom additions. I've been responsible for building construction projects using public dollars. If we come back later for three two-classroom additions, the mobilization cost, the disruption on campus for three little bitty, honestly, which are tiny, construction projects, and, and what would probably be the, the profit margin on those three little bitty add-ons, it would, it would be really hard for me to, to look at our constituents and say that the cost per square foot is what it would be for that, as opposed to if we did the front end. Or if, in the absence of that, Mr. Myers, you're directed to go find some more mobile classrooms to put behind a brand-new school. It, it, I did not know that it was, you know, instead of six, a six-classroom or an eight-classroom unit combined with a core capacity expansion, a bigger project that would result in a lower percentage fee for architects and, and different, different costs for, for mobilization. I, I just, I know that we can certainly award, add alternates is done all the time. So you can get a true cost or, or better cost on what that piece of the school was. So, so that won't be harmful or detrimental to the process, as long as it's in fact awarded.
Right.
And, and not, you'll go back later on.
Yes, yes, sir. And that's one of the things too, when we go out to bid, if, if the numbers come in low enough, we're going to, we're going to request that the alt adds, the alt adds are automatically included in, in the contract when we award it. If for some reason that the, the numbers come back from the bids and it's above what the money that we have, we have to go to the county and ask for the additional funds. At that point in time, we need to let them know as well that there is some cost savings if we add the additional classrooms at that point in time too. But we have to get the funding from the county to make this happen. And right now, the, the county has agreed to award us twenty-three and twenty-four million dollars respectively.
Have we talked with the county or the ELC with regards to possibly making these two shelters and hardening the, the outer shell, if you will?
Yes, sir. We, we've had some initial conversations with them and we, we want, we wanted to make sure that was put in there as an alt add, so that way the county could see it as well. Because initially, the schools are built to be schools. And while we want to, we want to add the additional functionality of having it as a high-wind shelter, then at that point in time, that's going to cost some additional money that we would like the county to look at and help us offset the costs for that as well. So our goal is to build the schools. And then with alt add, we would ask the county to look at offsetting the costs so we can make it into a fortified, fortified shelter for high winds as well.
Catherine Lake is fairly well inland here. Stump Sound is not so much. And I've got a concern over making that a shelter area. I know right now that we have, I believe it's Dixon Middle that's acting as the, the new school as a shelter area out there currently. But is, do we have any concerns with getting closer to the shoreline out there with the school and making it a shelter area?
That's a really good point. That's a good point. In, in that situation, I mean, with what we're asking, what we're looking at for the, for the high-wind shelters and stuff, we're looking at Dixon Middle School's a hundred and thirty mile per hour wind load rating. The new shelters, I think, Randy, if you were...
It's right at a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty.
It's over the code. Code-wise, we've got the design for this area.
Well, actually, the, the new Stump Sound Elementary will be more inland and probably safer if you want to look at it in that aspect.
Right.
I'm concerned, I'm, I'm concerned about the capacity of the school, the additional classrooms, because many of us sitting here tonight know Carolina Forest was built and we had two wings that were not used, and the next year they were used and then they were overcrowded. Now they are a little village by themselves and should... Now they are a little village by themselves and should probably withdraw from the city and be their own municipality, because they're, they're pretty huge. Uh, we also know that Jacksonville Commons Middle was built in a massive bond project. You were probably in charge of that, Earl. And, uh, two years later, we had to go back and add different, uh, classrooms to the wings. And they are overcrowded again. So I think this board is very cognizant of the growth and it may not be here right now, but it's gonna be here next year.
Exactly.
And, and we agree a hundred percent. And, uh, we'd like to, we would like to add as many classrooms as possible with the funding that's allowed. And, and just, just as a, just a precautionary measure though, that's why we're doing the alt add, just in case we do run out of funds for it, we can add the additional classrooms. Then we can go back to the county and ask them for some additional funding.
No, my understanding is we will all go back and ask if we have the additional funds. That means if the base bid comes in under far enough that we can afford the additional upgrades with the, either the structural or with the classrooms. Is that correct?
That's, that's what we did with Richland's Elementary School. We included all the alt adds in there and we still came in under budget. Um, as, as a courtesy though, we always let the county know that we're adding additional, uh, class space, which, uh, they were very receptive to it as well.
I, I would think they would be. Uh, in our conversations with them, I think everybody understands that we need bigger, larger facilities, uh, to accommodate the, the growth that we're undergoing.
I have a question. Steve, we're concerned with capacity. You said that this footprint was reduced by two hundred?
Hundred and thirty.
That's accurate. Roughly two hundred square feet, somewhere thereabouts.
Where, where did you take this off? I- 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 in the whole scheme, where did you take it off?
Richland's Elementary School actually has one more classroom than what you see behind it.
Mm-hmm.
We saved area, um, on mechanical rooms, things like that, where we had large mechanical rooms at Richland's.
Mm-hmm.
We've actually got classrooms there. There, there is a lot of saved area for classroom space now that we did not have to use for mechanical spaces. So that actually, you know, instead of adding more square footage, we actually brought it back down within what we're going. And Richland's actually bid, I think, at eighteen million, something like this.
Mm-hmm.
You can see that this school is around seventeen million.
Right.
So, uh, that's, that's the reason why. I'm glad you asked that question, because people say, well, you know, how did it stay the same? And that's the reason.
With those core areas, uh, being hardened, for lack of a better term, um, in the event of a storm.
Right.
Are there enough, um, toileting facilities and such built around that core area?
Yes. What we would do is in the core area set around the media center, if we had to open up other areas, we would have enough areas in there to open it up. We can expand. That's the reason for the larger generator to actually run most of the school. So, yes, sir.
In your traffic flow pattern, are we assuming that the buses are off to the right-hand side and going in the loop?
That is correct. The buses will actually come in and actually come up and loop it back around, around this area, back in. So it's basically, and I don't know if you've been out to Richland's, it's basically that same layer.
So basically, you, with that pattern, you're anticipating less interaction between private autos and bus traffic where they can be run the same?
I'll let you go NC DOT with me. I try my best. And I totally agree. And also, uh, DPI, the school planning.
Right.
Would love for this to be away from the bus, because that's, as long as I've been in the school business, that's what we've always been doing.
Mm-hmm.
But for the agencies to approve it, we've got to go through them in the traffic. So, yes, sir, I, I totally agree too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick comment. When we talk about trying to build schools bigger and bigger so we can pack more kids in there, there's got to be some discussion. When does a school become too big to manage? Because we're talking about children, kindergarten. We've got an elementary school down at Dixon, eleven hundred kids in it, K four, was built for seven hundred, eight hundred. But we've got to put them somewhere. The fifth grade is at the middle school. When does a school become too big, instructionally speaking, being able to manage? Forget about the core session, because you got to have people to manage that many kids. I don't know anybody in the business world that want, that would want to come in and take over a thousand-member school at any grade level. It is, it's entirely different. So I think we need to have that discussion, that dialogue. Mr. Reddick, you an elementary principal?
I can, from a principal's standpoint, I can tell you, when you've got ten and twelve teachers for each grade level, uh, you can forget any team planning. It's just not going to happen. It's gotta be, somebody's gotta come up with a really interesting schedule to get true collaboration. Uh, so I, I think schools do reach a point when they get too large. If, if our purpose is to give kids a quality education, to give teachers an environment where they can collaborate, where they can truly, uh, work together and feel like that they, they are sharing and doing the right things, I, I think there, there is a point. Uh, I don't know what the magic number is, but I, I think there's something we need to be aware of. Bigger is not better in anything that I know of. And, uh, I, I think this is a good example. And Mr. Taylor, thank you for bringing that up, because it's, I, I, I can tell you, a six-member team, you can handle that. That's, that's, four is really great, but up to six, you, you know, you still have some good collaboration. You have some, uh, opportunity for those, uh, classrooms to be, uh, covered. I hate to use the word covered, but for those class, for those kids to be engaged in some other instructional activities. But once you get ten and twelve, uh, classrooms per grade level, it, it is really, really difficult. And the school becomes almost segmented to the point where nobody really knows what's going on. It's, it's tough for a principal too, and tough for teachers.
Not just that, and it goes all the way to the high school level. Are we gonna swap good instruction for that?
Perhaps.
Are you gonna swap safety for that?
Right.
So there, I don't know what the magic number is, but getting too large is a problem. And talking about your core areas.
Yes.
Do you, you know, if you keep sending numbers in there, you want your child eating dinner now, third, tenth, class?
Good point. Good point. And I really believe that's why the legislation tried to drop the student number down in each classroom. However, it puts a burden on each school district to add more classrooms. But yes, you're exactly right. We've actually built elementary schools with twelve hundred to fifteen hundred students. It's just, it, it's, you guys, and you're exactly, exactly correct.
I was, I was thinking, I appreciate my colleagues who have a, a stronger background in instruction than I do. Um, I reverted to auxiliary services, uh, which is, you know, where I cut some of my teeth. And, and I, I did think about the core facilities and our cafeteria. So based on, on a student size, student body size of eight hundred and thirty-five students maximum, um, you know, have you designed the core cafeteria to handle a, a normal amount of lunch periods without having the kids in that school, which is filled to capacity?
Right.
Starting lunch at nine-thirty AM and ending lunch at, at?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Right.
So what, what's your cafeteria capacity in the core for a fully built-out school, a fully occupied?
You clearly know that that was larger.
It was larger, but that was because of the possibility of a shelter.
No, I thought it was additional classrooms.
That is correct. The actual area here in, let me have that. In the, um, multi-purpose room and the cafeteria, it is the, what we designed, just like Richland's, we designed this cafeteria and in the construction documents, and I'll be glad to shorten them, with the, uh, table layouts, we actually, our goal is to have three lunch periods. That's our goal. And so in the layout, now, depending on how your cafeteria manager, your principal lays out the, the seating, then it could vary. But as far as design loads, we've actually got in our design where you can put, I think it's right at three hundred or so per lunch period. And we've got two serving lines. We've actually got two serving lines that can rotate back and forth.
Mr. Baker, uh, you probably don't, might not realize this, but in elementary with a large school, there's no such thing as three lunch periods. There's no, that's impossible.
Exactly.
Because one, if you start lunch at nine-thirty.
Right.
You can only get, uh, you may, I think, I, I wouldn't care if you had six serving lines. You can only get so many kids in there at, at a certain rate. There's not enough frozen pizzas to, to, to get them through there. So, uh, you know, I, I, I caution everyone to, to kind of reconsider. There's no such thing as lunch periods.
Exactly.
As much, you know, in an elementary setting.
As it flows.
It's a flow.
You're exactly right.
Let me tell you, the, the lunch schedule is important to kids, to teachers, and to parents.
Well, for the camaraderie and all that. But with that, and with that, I might understand, it's just seating has to be, you're, you're exactly right.
Sam, Chair, I, I appreciate the dialogue this evening. Um, I have other questions. Interior, uh, interior finishes, hardening, um, sheet rock versus masonry walls. I wonder if it would be possible for us to schedule a more thorough review of, of these documents and, and, uh, you know, our elementary, potential elementary schools at an upcoming workshop of the board? We've, we've taken a lot of time. Everyone's been very gracious as we continue this debate. But we could be here probably a long time and I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Thank you, ma'am.
I think we can do that on the, we have a workshop on the twenty-sixth and we can add that to our agenda. And, uh, everybody will be, uh, commensurate with that. I don't need a motion or a second. They, we just add it to that.
That's great, honey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do like the idea of having regular briefings if we can work it in, whether it's every month or every quarter. But that would be very helpful to me as well.
I would appreciate that.
In, in our contracts, we do have, um, agreements for quarterly, quarterly, um, briefings. We can do it, uh, more briefly if, uh, Mr. Baker is willing to do it with us.
Steve, just so you know, I, I, I have a feeling that this board is gonna be talking about some type of project manager for these, um, from our side.
Okay, we, we have one. As far as the project manager, as far as the hiring staff, we have, uh, we do have a capital projects administrator, who's basically our, our project manager slash co-worker works that, uh, oversees both contractor and, and architect at the same time.
Yeah, what I've got here is just basically, um, a rendition. This is Richland's. However, the brick color, the roof color, all the roof is a metal sloped roof. They're flat roofs. Uh, the brick color can change. We will actually have sapper panels put up and we can invite all of you guys, because in one school district, we let the school board pick, and I am so grateful for that, for that, because the school board picked the wrong color of the roof, that the, the kids changed the actual school colors and we got, we got, uh, heckled about that. But anyway. Um. No, that's all right. And then quickly, uh, budget-wise, for Catherine Lake, um, land cost was, um, not applicable. Site improvements, we've got like one point seven to six in the site improvements. Building construction, uh, we've got right at seventeen million, one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars in the budget. Furniture, we've got one point six, almost one point seven million. Uh, we've got a contingency of eight hundred fifty-seven thousand. Uh, technical fees, now this is not all our fee. This has the soils testing, the special inspectors, one point four million. Total budget, base bid is twenty-two million, eight hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, with the proposed alternate bids, that's the additional classrooms, plus the, uh, design for, uh, the emergency shelter. Next is Stump Sound. Land cost here was five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Site improvement, basically the same, one point eight four million. Uh, building construction, seventeen bid, one fifty-four. Uh, furniture technology, one point six million. Contingency, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, uh, seven hundred one dollars. Technical fees, basically the same, one point four. Total budget on this one is twenty-three million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and ten. Same bid offer here. One thing here, we will have to put in, as we did at Richland's, a force man, about a mile and a half force man to get to the public, uh, sewer until. Other than that, um, construction-wise, time, uh, construction documents, we are projected to be finished in late February. However, depending on our site survey for Stump Sound, that may, we will call today. They're out there doing it now, so hopefully we'll have that site survey. It'll take us about four to six weeks, somewhere thereabouts, to finish the site. Uh, school board approval, we've got around the first of March. Uh, plans, advertising for bids in March twenty-nineteen. And what we would propose is these two schools could be bid separately or together. Together, just like, uh, Mr. Hudson stated, if you've got forty to fifty million dollars, you can entice larger contractors to come in. However, if you break it up in two, the smaller contractors would have a chance. But we have done this in other counties. We've actually bid it both ways and to see which way it falls, then let the school board decide. Um, let's see, construction, our project is May twenty-nineteen. Running begins in June. Uh, building construction in late, uh, starts in late June and construction completion date, February twenty-twenty-one. That was pretty quick and I apologize, but, uh, any other questions?
We, we interrupted you, but thank you for having some questions.
I appreciate the dialogue. And that's what, anytime you have any questions, comments, please feel free. And again, thank you very much for your time and I look forward to it.
Thank you. And that is the end of our business session for this evening. And we do not have anyone who signed up for, uh, our second public comment session. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Is it moved?
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this meeting is adjourned. Safe travels home.